Looks like we're just about ready to start here. So, good evening, everyone. I am Pam Anchetta, Voter Services Chair for the League of Women Voters, South County. And on behalf of the League, I would like to welcome you to the first Meet the Candidates Nights for 2016 in Westerly. Thank you to the members of the audience here at Westerly Town Hall, the candidates for Westerly Town Council, and thanks to our viewers on Cox Channel 18 and Verizon Channel 29. One of the most important duties we have as citizens is to learn about issues and candidates so we can make informed choices. If you find a forum like this is an essential part of your election decisions, please consider joining the League and help provide your community nonpartisan voter education and advocacy for open and accountable government. The League is open to both men and women. There are membership materials on the table at the back of Town Council Hall, and along with other information, you can look after the end of the forum. Also, please fill out a survey before you leave and voice your opinion about this forum. Democracy works only when citizens participate in their local government. Forums like this could become a valuable resource to Westerly's voters who care to be more than spectators in this town's civic process. So, talk with a League member tonight and consider attending a monthly meeting to learn more. We are here tonight to ask questions of the candidates and to listen to their responses, so please, hold your applause and refrain from reacting to the candidates' answers. Again, this is a nonpartisan forum. Though your voter interest and enthusiasm is encouraged, I ask that you listen respectfully to all candidates as they discuss issues important to the future of Westerly. Before we begin, I would like to thank a few people for helping with this program, for providing the funding, the League of Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund, for the use of the Town Hall and council chambers, the town of Westerly, and for their help and cooperation, the staff at Westerly Town Hall. Many thanks to my fellow members of the League of Women Voters, South County, who have worked many, many hours for planning this event, and thanks to the Westerly Public Access Television Studio, PEG RITV, for handling the live broadcast and frequent rebroadcast of this program. Thanks to all the local media covering this forum, and in particular, thank you to WBLQ 1230 AM Radio for broadcasting this program live. Last, but by no means least, I would particularly like to welcome and thank our moderator, Elizabeth Jondasch, a longtime League member and past president of the Wakefield Rotary. Now to Elizabeth, a veteran among forum moderators in South County. She is more than capable of keeping the discussion lively and the discourse civil. So, to you, Elizabeth.
Thank you very much, Pam. As you see, drawing lots has determined the seating order. One-minute opening statements will be made in seating order. One-minute closing statements will be in that order in reverse. Because of the number of candidates, most one-minute questions will be directed to only two candidates. However, because there are an odd number of candidates, one question will be directed to three candidates. The order in which candidates will be asked a question is random. All candidates will be asked one question before any candidate is asked a second question, and so on through each round. All candidates will be asked the same number of questions. In addition, each candidate will be given two colored index cards. When a candidate would like to respond to a question which has not been directed to him or her, he or she may turn in one of the cards and will be allowed to answer that question. A candidate will have two opportunities to do this. More than one candidate may turn in a card on any question. However, once a candidate has used both cards, he or she may only respond to questions directed to him or her. In his or her closing statements, a candidate can address issues or answer questions he or she was unable to answer during the forum. There will also be a series of lightning round questions addressed to all candidates, which require only a yes or no answer. However, we are giving you a little 10-second advantage there, so you can say, so you can use that, but not more than 10 seconds. I'd like this to be a wonderful introduction to our candidates here, to the League, and how we run our very professional forums. So, let's start right away, and we'll start with candidate number one, Philip Overton.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. It's important to hear what all the candidates have to say on important issues. My first term on the Westerly Town Council was very enjoyable. Helping the town move forward from the problems that it has had in the past was certainly a monumental task. It seemed like, in my first year, we were dealing with crisis after crisis. I'm very proud to be part of the 2014 to 2016 Town Council, as it dealt with each crisis in a highly professional manner. Our two greatest accomplishments were the hiring of a professional manager and an expert in town administration and hiring a highly skilled attorney. As I said, I'm very proud to be part of the Town Council, and if the voters wish, I would be happy to serve a second term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. And as you can see, we have our timers to the left, and they'll keep us moving right along. So, Mr. Silvestri.
Thank you. Some of us may need a shoe or something to cut us off. Hi, I'm asking for your support this election to continue the transparent government and accountability taxpayers deserve. I'm a fierce protector of tax dollars. My drive for public office was to get involved and make a difference. I'm a hands-on, roll-up-your-sleeve type of person. I'm proud of this town I grew up in. I was coached and mentored by many whom I considered leaders and idols that made me who I am today. Now, it's my turn to give back. I'm a people person and welcome the interaction of townspeople to solve issues and plan for the future. I have the knack to get everyone around the table and get it done. Most aspects of town government mirror running of my business, insurances, building upkeep, vehicle maintenance, and employees. All these things I do effectively every day makes running for Town Council a perfect fit. I could not do what I enjoy without the support of my wife Susan and daughters Elizabeth and Tameka. Between the late-night meetings, homework, dance, and meals, we make it work. So, I ask for your vote, and I promise to keep Westerly at its best.
Thank you. Mr. Carson.
Thank you, and congratulations on reinstituting the local chapter. I think this is a different format, in addition to what the chamber provides, and it's much needed and appreciated. My name is John Carson. Most people know me by a first name of Jack. I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Westerly, having lived here for the better part of 71 years. I was a teacher, coach, and administrator in the local public school system for 34 years. I was a grad, I'm a graduate of Springfield College, and in addition, I've served on the Westley School Committee for a term, a four-year term, and I'm also an incumbent member of the Westley Town Council. I look forward to continuing the work that the council has done and reiterate the challenges that others have mentioned that we've endured the last four years as we move forward toward solutions and remedies on behalf of the people from all parts of the town.
Thank you. Mr. Ober.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring tonight's Candidates Night. I'm Michael Ober. I'm running for the Westley Town Council because it's important for citizens to participate in their government. Our town is facing many challenges, such as our bond rating being lowered, substance abuse, economic development, and protecting our environment. I believe I can bring my experience in local government and my ability to work with others to help solve these problems. I was a member of the Westley School Committee for six years. For those years, I was chairman of the Capitol Overview Committee. I'm currently a member of the School Department's Subcommittee on Policy, vice chairman of Wesleyan Land Trust, and the Board of Finance.
Thank you. Mr. Aiello.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Bill Aiello. I'm a retired veteran, involved citizen, and a grandfather. I was born in Wesley, attended Wesley and Charroha Schools before entering active duty. My career quickly progressed. I included working with military and civilian personnel, coordinated security with U.S. and host nation representatives, assisted in design and oversight of multimillion-dollar construction projects, and also leading security efforts for major consolidation and relocation, developed and managed budgets, provided government oversight for security and law enforcement contracts, was a trainer, evaluator, liaison, superintendent, and director, completed a degree in security administration, elected secretary and twice as president of a military association, and awarded Tennessee's Outstanding Achievement Award. Furthered my knowledge upon return here through meetings of the municipal and school sides, either as an attendee or as a committee member. And I served my church community and served my fire district as an elected auditor. And I listen, seek input, and will make the best possible decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aiello. Mr. Selico.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, cable TV, and WBLQ for providing the candidates with this opportunity. I'd like to thank the voters for electing me to serve on the Town Council these past two years. I have five daughters, and I am a lifelong resident of Westerly. I served 20 years as a member of the Wesley Police Department, four years on the Wesley School Committee, and 11 years on the Wesley Planning Board. I'm a United States Army Veteran Specialist, Fifth Class. I have a bachelor's degree in science from Roger Williams University, a master's certificate in public management from Roger Williams University, and I've owned various businesses in Westerly since 1965. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gagne.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you for bringing this type of forum to the town of Westerly. We've needed more discussion. When I ran in 2014, I promised to do my homework. I'm happy to say that I served with a number of other gentlemen who also have done their homework. We've accomplished a lot on this council. I would ask the voters of Westerly to give us a vote of confidence, and I would ask them for their vote. I've lived in Westerly since 1989. I believe in transparency. We've worked toward bringing transparency to Westerly government. We've worked on policies and procedures, and I thank the citizens for participating. And please, go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Champion.
Well done. Good evening. Wanted to clarify that my last name rhymes with chicken bouillon. It is champouillon, so you can remember that. Came to live to Westerly full-time about eight years ago, and five years ago, sat in on my first Town Council meeting in the hopes of making comments on an issue that was important to me. I didn't have that opportunity because the night was consumed by a lot of other speaking and not much productive work. And I found that frustrating, and that followed through for a few more meetings that I attended. When I finally did have the opportunity to speak my mind, I didn't get a response, which saddened me terribly. I sat around for four more years and watched the growth and watched the change, and in the most recent years, finally feel that there's a forum for the public to come to and have questions answered. It's not quick, and it may not be always what you want to hear, but it has been thorough, and I have a lot of hope for the future. I'd like to be part of that team.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Marone.
Thank you. My name is Ed Marone. I'm a lifelong member of the Westley community. I was first, my government participation began in Westerly some 40 years ago, believe it or not, when I was a member of the Planning Board in 1974. I went on to serve in the Rhode Island Legislature representing Westerly and Block Island, first elected in 1980, and subsequently was elected by the residents of this community and Block Island to serve in the Rhode Island State Senate, retiring in 1992. I'm recently retired from the Superior Court. I was clerk of the Superior Court for Washington County. I have the time. I think I've had the experience. I know I have the drive and certainly the interest to make Westerly move forward and to keep what we have and to build on a wonderful base here in Westerly. Thank you. And that's enough. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's jump right into the first question, and this will be directed to Mr. Aiello and Mr. Gagne. Question number one. Many citizens are concerned about the quality of life in our town. How will you balance citizens' property rights and economic development in Westerly? What tools will you employ to find the balance? Mr. Aiello.
Is that a loaded question?
That is a one-minute question.
Wow, okay. Quality of life and economic development, property owners' rights, there can be a, there needs to be a balance between economic growth and residents' property owners' rights. I know there's some issues going on right now that involve that. I do wholly support quality-of-life initiatives. I do specific tools, and I'm not sure I'm going to comment, I can comment on that right now. I would work to seek the input of everybody involved in any particular issue, and I will listen to proponents, opponents, and I would, if we need experts, I would call in experts for certain issues. I do promote economic growth, and I do promote residents' right, property owners' rights. We just need to find a balance and support the growth.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Gagne.
Yes. Quality of life is important. Why I moved to Westerly. It's a beautiful community, and it needs to maintain its sense of place. How would we do that is involvement of the citizens. I attended a comp plan meeting where they're drafting the new comprehensive plan. Adherence to the comprehensive plan is critical in making sure. Those are the goals that are set out by the community, developed by the community, reviewed by the Planning Board, and reviewed by the Town Council, with plenty of input. The other thing that was said at that forum was enforcement. Citizens are looking for the fair enforcement of the rules, whether it's zoning rules, whether it's just minimum housing rules, one set of rules. That's what they're looking for in enforcement. And the other thing is diversity of viewpoints. That podium needs to be open, and that podium needs to be a place where the citizens can come, where the citizens can hear from their leaders. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're moving on to question number two, which will be addressed to Mr. Marone and Mr. Silvestri. Moody's recently downgraded Westerly's bond rating. This downgrade was due in part to the practice in Westerly of using monies from the fund balance, aka rainy day fund, to balance the town budget. Do you support the town manager's recently proposed policy to address this practice? Mr. Marone.
I think the manager did attempt to address the practice. I think my questions to the manager would have to be, how did we get here, and what were the trigger points, and what were the red flags that should have been recognized prior to that downgrade? Also, I understand that just because Moody says it so, it doesn't mean it is so, that there is in fact a, an appeal process through Moody's. Did we take advantage of that? I have more questions than answers regarding how and when the downgrade in the Westley bond rating occurred, and what could have been done to mitigate that as happening. I think enough wasn't done. They caught us. We haven't, we've been downgraded, and now we must build, build ourselves back up. The manager has a plan. I'll wait to see the details further.
All right. Mr. Silvestri.
Thank you. The fund balance absolutely should be a rainy day fund that we only use for disasters or very specific issues that come up. This last council during the last budget season made it very clear that we were not going to use the fund balance. Took us a long time to get here. I cannot speak for previous councils, management, finance boards, whatever. It happened. It was, it was used continually. We'd always pay it back, but no one ever raised the flag that that was improper. So, I don't want to, I don't want to place blame. I just want to fix the problem, but understand it's going to take five or 10 years for us to build up that fund. It's going to be adherent of the council through budget seasons to set aside that money and not touch it. And unfortunately, it's going to be another tough budget crunch. And the manager has his, has his outlines and policies to what he's going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Overton, you want to use one of your wild cards, and you, you have one minute to address this question.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm a certified financial planner. I've been in practice 33 years. I spotted the structural deficit in my first year in office, and I did bring it up two straight years. It was actually pretty easy to see, and it's all got to do with the economic cycle. We're mid-late in the economic cycle, and at this point, we should absolutely, both the municipal side and the school side should not be touching the rainy day fund. I 100% support the manager's initiative to make the proper corrections that will be necessary to rectify this issue. It's going to take a little while, but I don't think it's going to take all that long. I would say realistically, three, four, or five years, we should, we should be in good shape as far as our surplus goes, and potentially a contingency fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We're going to go on to question number three, which will be addressed to Mr. Carson and to Mr. Selico. If the $38 million school redesign bond is passed by the voters, how will that impact, A, individual taxes, and B, what percentage does this bond add to the overall town debt? Mr. Carson.
Thank you. I attended a workshop the past evening, two evenings ago at St. Clair's Parish, and there was a slide put up that stated that because the Springbrook School bond issue comes off the books this year, and each successive year, other bond issues come off the books, there will be no impact above what we presently have for the taxpayer. That the school bond issue is going to be phased in over three or four years, and so we'll borrow 12 million the first year, 12 million the second, the second year, and another 12 or so the third year. It's important to note that this bond issue, we will recoup, if it's passed, 30% of the price from the state of Rhode Island in terms of the issue. So, the overall 38 million is reduced to 25 million out of pocket, and with interest, it moves back up into the mid-30s.
Thank you very much. Mr. Selico.
Thank you very much. Make no mistake about it, the $38 million bond, if passed, will have an effect on everybody's taxes. When you borrow money, it relates to paying it back, and there are interest rates that you pay, and it has an impact on your taxes, whatever that is. Now, because there'll be bonds that are being paid and coming offline, the impact won't increase. It'll stay the same. But it costs money to borrow money, and it will definitely have an impact on your taxes. There's no doubt about it.
And what, do we, are we finished?
No.
Okay. And the percentage, the bond will add to the overall town debt. I'm not, did you, did you want to respond to that?
I don't know the percentage that the bond will, will add to the overall town debt, but it will add to debt, and it will, it will impact your taxes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Aiello, you want to use one of your wild cards.
Yes, please.
You got one minute.
Thank you. Just a little clarification, because there's been a lot of information out on social media and such and the radio. In basic terms, there's a difference between financial impact and the debt service. Financial impact is basically a snapshot of an annual amount or percentage. That's how much we're going to pay on the dollar, so to speak. But like Mr. Carson said, that the debt service, borrowing this mu, I mean, we have this much, we're paying this much now, and over time, the debt service decreases. So, there's a lot of wiggle room. There's a lot of room in there for future bonds or other adjustments that need to be made. This bond, according to several people, will not cause an increase of the taxes of what we're paying right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're going to go on to question number four, which we will address to Ms. Champion, Mr. Ober, and Mr. Overton. So, are you for or against the purchase of land owned by Westerly Granite, commonly known as COPAR, C-O-P-A-R? Please explain your answer.
Simply stated, yes. That property has been an issue as long as I've been sitting here, which isn't as long as many of you. It has been incredibly contentious. It's a dangerous site for the community. The ability to change the use should have been addressed years ago. It was operating illegally. Remediation of that property is going to take upwards of a year now. Initially estimated 18 months. We've had months passed. The burden to the town is going to exist whether we own the property or not. The taxpayers are going to pay through this, either through litigation or a purchase of that property. Again, remediation and making that space safe, getting that silica dust granite off of that property is going to be a problem. What could that property be used for? There's an incredible series of possibilities that have to be examined in the long term. As far
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Ober.
As of right now, I'd be against purchasing the property. There's a lot of issues going on with it. We don't know exactly what we'd be getting into if we purchased it. I am for looking at what we can do, what it would cost to purchase it and take care of any problems on it. So, I would like to see a long-term resolution of the plan, and I think right now, to rush in and purchase it without knowing exactly what you want to do with it, what can be done, or what someone else may want to do with it, is a little too hasty.
Thank you. Mr. Overton.
I'm going to ask if I may have another question. George Camoli is a client of mine, so I'm recused on this issue.
All right. That's, that's fine. Mr. Carson, yes.
Yes.
Your card, yes.
I'm adamantly opposed to even considering purchasing this property for the following reasons. One, we would be taking up more taxable property off of the tax rolls, number one. Number two, is a security issue there is unimaginable. There's a tremendous liability with purchasing a brownfield site. We did not, as a town, pollute or in otherwise tamper with the environment out there. It should not be the townspeople's responsibility, the taxpayers, to clean up that, that site. Number three, in a visitation I had about three weeks ago with Mr. Camoli, there is plenty of rock there that's always been mined. We read recently about the Stonington Outer Harbor breakwater needing repair. There is economic activity there. There is an extraction ordinance that's being conducted by Councilman Gagne and Councilman Duhamel, and I think going forward with the proper measures in place, that could be a viable economic site. There is no reason for us to purchase that property.
Thank you very much. Okay. What we're going to do is ask you a question we've already asked, because otherwise, my whole system is going to go to, it's the only fair way to do it, because... I know he used a wild card, but I don't think it was on this question. Okay. All right. I'm going to redirect the question about the school redesign. If the $38 million school redesign bond is passed by the voters, how will that impact an individual's taxes, and what percentage does this bond add to the overall town debt?
First of all, thank you for the question. I would like to say that I do support the school redesign project. We have five elementary schools in Westerly, and we only need three. So, I am definitely in favor of closing an elementary school and making our, our schools more efficient. As far as, I do believe it will increase taxes. I don't think it'll increase it all that much, but I do think it will increase taxes. I want to see these dollars that are being spent to keep unnecessary schools open, to better enhance the education of our children. We're spending money in overhead right now that I would like to be spent directly on the children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a little quick yes/no answer, and we're going to start with Mr. and we're going to start with Mr. Overton. Shall we go with Mr. Overton first? Yeah, we're just going to go around. We're just going, we'll start with you, sir. All right, yes/no, if you have a little explanation, 10 seconds, not more than that. Yes or no, and I'm going to ask each candidate the same question. Do you think the town should require contractors bonding for all building and road projects so that all new roads are required to follow the standards of the town engineer and the fire department? Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
Absolutely.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Mr. Aiello?
Yes.
Mr. Selico?
I would like to say yes and I'd like to just expound on that for my 10 seconds in reference to contractors that work on our roads. This council just adopted a protocol for the work on those roads.
Thank you. Mr. Gagné?
Absolutely.
Ms. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Marone?
Yes.
Okay, question two. We'll start with Mr. Silvestri. Do you support term limits on all elected officials in Westerly?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Depending on what the specifics are, yes.
Mr. Ober?
No.
Mr. Aiello?
No.
Mr. Selico?
I will say yes with a caveat. It doesn't matter to me, but I do support, I have no problem with term limits.
Okay, Mr. Gagné?
Yes.
Ms. Champion?
Yes, assuming that there's a consecutive term limit and a break and you can be reserving.
Mr. Marone?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
No. If you have somebody good, why would you want to get rid of them? Thank you.
Okay, question number three. Will, Mr. Carson, will you be voting to approve ballot question eight, the 38.5 million bond to redesign our elementary school?
Most definitely.
Mr. Ober?
Yes, I'll be supporting it. I've been involved with the building projects since we started with the 2020 committee. I have supported all the building projects that have gone forward and I support this one.
Thank you. Mr. Aiello?
Yes, and I don't think there's a member of the public who's attended more meetings than I have been on this subject, so yes, absolutely.
Mr. Selico?
Absolutely not, and I'll add a caveat to that too because they hired a consultant to guide them through this process and there was a lot of information that consultant brought forth that was not addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Gagné?
No, and this question's about choices. And there are needs and there are wants. There are a lot of needs in this plan and
Okay, thank you. Ms. Champion?
No, not as currently written. It does need redesign, but I don't think the plan that's written is appropriate.
Mr. Marone? Mr. Overton?
Yes, I do support the school committee on this issue.
Mr. Silvestri?
No, not as written.
Okay. And Mr. Carson, you already started. You've already started, yes.
Change your mind?
Mr. Ober, question number four for the lightning round. Do you support the charter commission's recommendation to hire a director of public works who is not the town manager?
No, I don't think that type of thing should be in the charter.
Mr. Aiello?
Repeat that question, please.
Do you support the charter commission's recommendation to hire a director of public works who is not the town manager?
Who is not the town manager?
Not the town, a separate director of public works.
Financial, I would like to see a financial impact, but in theory, yes, I support that.
Mr. Selico?
Absolutely. I think a director of public works brings a lot of coordination to the projects in town and I think a lot of projects would become less expensive and completed quicker.
Thank you. Mr. Gagné?
No, I won't. And the reason is, in the short term, if there were, if the director of public works left, we need to be able to respond. The manager would need flexibility.
Ms. Champion?
I believe we do need a separate director. The caseload of the town manager right now is incredibly heavy and the public works area is such a specific set of technical areas. We need somebody that can handle that independently.
Thank you. Mr. Marone?
I believe we need a director of the Department of Public Works, but I don't believe that this issue should be included as a charter referendum item.
Mr. Overton?
I do not support hiring additional staff. I do believe that the manager can handle that issue. Thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
I do support the director of public works. I think with a hierarchy of management, we can get more jobs done in-house with appropriate direction.
Mr. Carson?
I would caution in taking on more non-essential personnel at the town budget when we're stressed, as has been previously identified. However, going forward, once we rebuild the surplus and other things are taken care of, I think it would be worth consideration.
Thank you very much. Well, I thought we were going to finish it for, okay. You get a break. That was good. We got the blood going here. Now, let's go on. Question number five will be directed to Mr. Selico and to Mr. Marone. Do you think Westerly has a drug problem in the community? And if so, what three specific things will you do in the next two years to combat it? Mr. Selico?
Yes, I do believe there's a drug problem in the town of Westerly based on the information that I hear from the police department, from the substance abuse task force. And I think the most important thing the council can do to address that issue is to, number one, support the police department in their efforts and, number two, support the substance abuse task force in their mission to address those things.
Do you have a third thing that you would do?
I don't.
Those two?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Marone?
There is a drug problem in Westerly. Having just retired from the Superior Court, I can tell you firsthand that there is a drug problem in Westerly. In a former life, I was the first adult drug court manager for the state of Rhode Island through the Superior Court. So I can tell you that there is a drug problem in Westerly and in our region. What would I do? I think we come at the drug issue from three areas. First is education and that starts in our schools. Second is enforcement and we must give the police department the tools and the money to make that effort on behalf of the residents of this community. If you've never held in your arms the parents of a child who's died from a drug overdose, you would know what pain is because it's inconsolable pain. And the third thing, the third thing, of course, is, so we have education, we have, then there's the interdiction on, for the drug affected person and that's, of course, we help the drug addict and his family get better.
All right, thank you very much. The next question will be addressed to Mr. Carson, Mr. Overton and Mr. Silvestri. What is your perception of the condition of the infrastructure over which the town of Westerly has control? How would you address the town's infrastructure needs now and in the future?
The town is facing many challenges and this is just one that we all live with every single day. We have a major project going on on Cross Street. Soon we'll be working on School Street. We're going to have to take care of the Stillman Bridge. We're going to have to take care of the culvert from the post office into the river. And these issues are not going to stop. We have high water marks encroaching on Bay Street and Watch Hill and Atlantic Avenue and every other road in the town is, we're going to have to summon the courage to continually support reasonable bond issues to manage these problems.
Thank you very much. Mr. Overton?
Thank you. This is a perennial problem. Two years ago, when I first was elected to the Westerly Town Council, the citizens were up in arms because our roads were in really, really bad shape. We have made some strides over the last two years, but there is still much work to do. As Mr. Carson had mentioned, we have bridges that need repair. I'm unhappy with the condition of Main Street. When tourists come walking, come driving into Westerly, they hit Main Street and that's their first impression and it's not a good first impression. So we have to continually get the resources allocated in that particular area to take care of our infrastructure needs. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Silvestri?
Thank you. Infrastructure is an ongoing project in any town. So if you're going to lay down a 50-year road, which is what we're doing on Cross Street and Beet Street, you have to make sure the infrastructure is going to last another 50 years. That's probably already been in the ground 100 years. So my support of a superintendent of public works, you need somebody to manage that kind of maintenance. And this is an ongoing thing. We're never going to not pay for streets. We're never not going to pay for sewer upgrades. It's part of the fabric of what our budget is and we have to be diligent enough to allocate those funds each and every year.
All right, thank you.
And in addendum to that
Mr. Carson, one moment, please.
I have 10 seconds left.
You have another card? Okay.
No, I'm not going to use a card. I think I had 10 seconds left. Excuse me. There's a misunderstanding in town about what is a town road and what is a state road. And we can only take care of town roads. We're fiscally challenged by that. Franklin Street, Granite Street and Main Street are the state's responsibility, not the town of Westerly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Gagné?
Yes.
You have one minute.
Yes, thank you. Infrastructure, roads, this is one of the core responsibilities. There's roads, police protection, and there's educating our students. Cross Street, at the end of the day, it's a million dollars, it's over a million dollar project. We have over 160 miles of road. What Westerly needs is, we are running out of bond money on our 2014, 12 bond. We're running out of money on that, that was $6 million bond. We will have to go to bond again for the roads. One of the challenges earlier, I said, needs versus wants on the bond, on the school bond, it's one of the challenges, it's wants on that side. There are too many wants. One of the, one of the things in here is $12 million at Springbrook School, 11 million of which are extra. Of that, you could have 7.8 Cross Street projects.
You have 15 seconds if you have more to
If so, if the voters chose and said, hey, we want this and not that, they can invest in, they can look at things and say, send it back to a school committee, let them rethink the wants versus needs.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go on to the next question and that will be addressed to Mr. Aiello and Ms. Champion. This question is, what would you specifically propose to protect the public's constitutional rights to access the shoreline in Westerly?
Me first?
Yes, you are first.
You give me these great questions. Part, there is a listing of rights of way in the proposed harbor management plan. It is a listing. They have to, it's one of the things that are required. I do support public access to the shoreline. I'm sorry, repeat part of the question, please.
Well, it was, what would you specifically propose to protect the public's constitutional rights to access the shoreline in Westerly?
Okay. Again, have some public forums on the harbor management plan one and on the rights of way, for those areas that we need surveying, survey them. It would be a multi-year project. They wouldn't get it all done in one year. Have a surveying, have it properly marked, have them properly maintained, properly funded maintaining them.
Thank you. Ms. Champion?
The original charter for the Colony of Rhode Island by Charles II had stated that those waterways would be available to the public forever and that was reinforced by the state constitution in more current times. The first problem is that they were neglected, that nobody monitored, that nobody oversaw and nobody enforced what we as citizens were entitled to. We need education of the property owners. If you bought property in that area and were not informed by your real estate agent, your lawyer, or somebody next door to you, you need to be educated in that. That's first and foremost. Second is parts of, I believe, the Parks and Recreation Department or of our coastal management department needs to be allocated to keep an eye on these pathways, to make sure they're kept clear and to arrange for some sort of safe and secure drop-off area. Most of these accessways on east or west ends of Atlantic Avenue are not far from public parking areas and you can park there and simply walk down, but it is management and it is maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Mr. Overton?
The rights of way to the beach are a constitutional right of all citizens. The challenge that we have is we have 50 rights of way to the beach and there was virtually no money that was allocated for the cleanup of them, the survey of them and the maintenance of them. This council took the bull by the horns and we increased the budget, I believe, from $1,500 to $20,000 for rights of way cleanup. It's going to take us probably five or six years of doing that to get all of these rights of way up to the standards that they need to be. But I am very strong on the citizens' rights to access the beach via these rights of way. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to go on to question eight and this will be directed to Mr. Ober and Mr. Gagné. The Westerly Charter presently requires separate financial directors for the town and the school. Currently, those two positions have been consolidated into one in violation of the charter. Which structure of the finance department do you believe will best serve the current and future needs of the town of Westerly and please explain your position?
I served on the Westerly School Committee. I served when there wasn't a finance director. We hired a finance director at the same time the town had a finance director. I believe it worked out well. I believe that that allowed us to develop budgets and present them in a way that left few questions of what was needed. I understand why they consolidated. It was an idea to save money. We tried it. It's worked out in some ways and not in others. I'm in favor of going back to finance director for the school department and finance director for the town.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Gagné?
Yes. This is an example of where the practices in the past have diverted from the charter. In other words, the charter wasn't followed and we've been struggling with this issue. I believe that they should be separate. To say that they're equivalent, though, and require equivalent qualifications and equivalent cost, I think, is misdirected. The school finance side needs an accounting. They need to know where they're spending their money. That is totally up to them. The council only reviews with a large number. On the finance side for the town, though, for the entire municipality, that finance director has to be involved with investments, investing the town's funds. They have to be involved in pension funds and all of those, working with our investment firms and actuaries, et cetera, and advising the town manager. So the equivalency of saying both of them, you need two finance directors, I think is misplaced. I think you have an accounting function in one and you have a finance and accounting in another. And they look different.
Thank you very much.
I like, I had some time left over. I'd like to use that up.
Did he have time? I don't think so. Did he?
I think I
Do you want to use one of your cards?
Sure, I'll use one of my cards. You know, again, I've been through this, you know, yes, the finance department of the town does have certain things that does, that the school department does, doesn't, but the school department also has state and federal regulations that they have to match and it's as big a job, if not bigger, in some ways. So to say that you don't need a finance director, I, you do. It's a majority of our budget. It has many things we need to do that are connected to state and federal money. And you not only have that, you have over 300 employees that payroll, that pension, medical, all that that comes up. It's a full-time job. It's a full-time director's job. They were hired for a purpose. We went from a finance person only because, to a director because there was just too much to do, too complicated and it needed, it needs it again.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we're going to go back to our lightning round and Mr. Aiello, you are the first one on this. So, here. Bradford Preserve was purchased with funds earmarked for open space, recreation and wellhead protection. Following a successful Following a successful $3 million bond referendum on November 7, 2006, now, do you support recreation at Bradford Preserve? Yes or no?
Yes, I do, along with many other people.
Mr. Seliko?
Yes, I do support recreation at the Bradford Preserve with caveats.
Thank you. Mr. Gagné?
Yes, with respect for neighbors and caveats, yeah.
Ms. Champion?
With respect for neighbors, caveats, and the environment.
Mr. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
I do not. That field is highly disruptive to the neighbor, neighbors in that area. I'd like to see it turned back to its natural state. Thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, I do, with certain management upgrades that we need to do to make it compatible between both recreation and the neighbors.
Mr. Carson?
Yes, the people voted overwhelmingly for an open space slash recreation facility.
Mr. Ober?
Uh, yes, the bond included language that said it was for recreation.
Thank you, and Mr. Seliko, we'll start with you. Question here. Should the town develop a five-year plan for maintenance of all town-owned buildings, properties, and utilities?
Yes.
Mr. Gagné?
Yes.
Ms. Champion?
Yes, there should be a long-term maintenance plan for everything the town works on.
Mr. Maroon?
Yes, all the more reason for a DPW directive.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri? Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
All right, next one.
May I use one of my cards on this?
Yes, too.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was trying to give you a break there. All right, do it.
Can I use my card as, for a minute on this topic?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. This is an interesting topic, because it goes back to when I was on the planning board for a number of years. The maintenance program in the town of Westerly for many years was ignore it until it becomes a capital expense, and then you can't ignore it anymore. So I've been preaching and preaching and preaching for a maintenance schedule of all town buildings. I advocated for an annual inspection of every single piece of property and building and piece of equipment that the town owns, okay, to make a list and compile that and to see what the needs are. That should be done every year. We should not be have a capital improvement program instead of a maintenance program. We do need a capital improvement, but we need a maintenance program also.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right. All right, we're looking at our time, but we like these yes/no questions a lot. Mr. Gagné, yes. Do you think the town needs to contract out grant writing? Should they contract out the grant writing?
The grant writing function. Possibility exists. There's grant writing functions, and there's a lot of talent within our town employees.
Ms. Champion?
I'm going to say no. I'm sure there's got to be someone around here that can do the job.
Mr. Maroon?
I don't believe we should contract it out, no.
Mr. Overton?
No, we have highly talented employees. Thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
Should be all done in-house.
Mr. Carson?
Yeah, we'd be fortunate to replace Ms. Grabowski as soon as possible.
Mr. Ober?
I'm not for contracting out.
Mr. Ayello?
Keeping it in-house, I think will pay for itself. Thank you.
And Mr. Seliko?
I think it should be kept in-house, but I don't know that it warrants a full-time position.
Thank you. Question number eight will go to Ms. Champion. Do, this is a yes/no. Do you support the creation of the super-high-speed network service town-wide?
Yes, when the right program is found.
Mr. Maroon?
I support it, but for me, it's a low priority.
Mr. Overton?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Do you support the creation of the super-high-speed network service town-wide? Internet, high-speed?
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri?
I absolutely do support it, but with no government input or responsibility.
Mr. Carson?
When we get a viable proposal, I'll support it.
Mr. Ober?
Yes, I would support it.
Mr. Ayello?
In theory, I like the idea, but I'd like more details on it.
Okay, Mr. Seliko?
I support it, provided that it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, and I think we need to really research that to find what the best program is.
Mr. Gagné?
Yes, but like anything else, the devil is in the details. I don't support public money being utilized for it, though.
All right, and now, Mr. Maroon, you get the last yes-no question. You can start with you. Do you think the funding of the police pension fund is adequate?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Overton?
No, I don't.
Mr. Silvestri? Mr. Carson?
It's adequate, but it needs to be enhanced.
Mr. Ober?
Yes, I believe it's adequate.
Mr. Ayello?
Yes, and we need to keep making progress.
Mr. Seliko?
I believe that the funding of the police pension should coincide with what our actuarial company tells us, and as long as we do that, I believe it's adequate, and it has not happened for a number of years, but for a number of years, then the town has tried to maintain it.
Thank you. Mr. Gagné?
At this time, and he stole my line, Mario. Yes, well, based on the actuaries' information and that, I believe it's adequately funded presently, but I think we need to build toward the future retirements and improve our position.
Ms. Champion?
Yes, what they said.
So you think it's adequate funding right now?
With room for growth.
All right, thank you. I'm checking time. Do we have time for one more round?
Yes, I think that, yes, we do.
Okay, Mr. Carson, we'll start with you, and then we'll, Ms. Champion, you'll answer this also, please. What proactive measures would you propose to address the issues as related to the Westerly Airport?
Well, we've, as a member of the sitting council, we recently retained the services of a prominent attorney who helped the people surrounding Green Airport in Warwick. He's going to advise us on the best route to take. Secondarily, and it would be an urging on my part to protect the interests of the people surrounding, the quality of their life, and just as important to me, for every single citizen in the town, the valuation of the property, so it's not depreciated by more development inside the limits of the airport. I don't see the airport runway ever being extended. There's no room to go, but I think the plans of RIAAC include other developments on-site, more hangars, et cetera, bringing larger and larger planes and more often. They need to have a site manager there, and we need to be able to control the hours of operation.
Thank you. Ms. Champion?
I'd first like to see a citizens advisory committee that is in contact with the airport and would be supportive of monitoring the traffic and the activities at the airport. I would like to see knowledge and adherence of the comprehensive plan. There are reams and reams of paperwork that involve the quality of life of the people living in that area, and we need to adhere to what the state guidelines are as far as runway protection zones and the overlay district.
Thank you. Question 10 is, oh, Mr. Seliko?
Thank you. I'd like to use my second card on this topic.
Well, we're happy to hear from you.
The RIAAC vehemently denies that there'll be any expansion of the airport, but they don't deny that there'll be an expansion of service. And I'm proud to say that, based on my prompting, the town council has hired an expert to help us draft an ordinance for the Westerly Airport. That being said, there are five airports in the state of Rhode Island, five state airports. One of them has an airport ordinance, and you might think it's Green Airport, and it's not. It's Lincoln Airport, and their ordinance is a page and a half long. We don't have to reinvent the wheel on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're turning now to question 10. Mr. Ober and Mr. Silvestri? What do you think are the three major issues in Westerly's north end that should be addressed in the application to the state for the Working Cities Challenge Grant? Pardon me?
I believe the infrastructure, I believe community development organizations, and I believe envi, and environmental review of what is being done.
Mr. Silvestri?
Thank you. The north end, there's been a lot of money invested over the years with CDBG money. A lot of homeowners, they've invested numerous dollars into their homes. I would hate to see it slip back into the heyday of the late 80s, early 90s. We have to make sure that we have our housing enforcement, minimum housing, that we give our own staff the support and tools that they need to enforce our own ordinances to keep it up. The job growth program, we need, you know, low-income people are desperate for minimum wage jobs, and we have to open up those avenues for them so that they can actually go out and get a job, and then drug enforcement.
Thank you. All right, we're on to question number 11, and this is addressed to Mr. Overton, Mr. Ayello.